We're calling to order six oh five. Our committee of the whole.
Thank you. Has everybody had a chance?
Okay, the minute, the minute.
Yep.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Liz and. Because I missed.
So we just had our student art show and Dr. Ackerman ran into one of her students from Fitch Middle School who she knew, who is now practicing artist who had her husband as an art teacher. And she was the principal. So, you know, when I say come back to community and our community comes in and you all who have served this district for such a long time, it's really a special, special moment to be able to see students from the past.
Thank you.
What a nice if we all knew about it.
Well, there's our teachers were supposed to let the kids know and brought middle school, they all came, but we thought the high school was really so busy that I don't know if some didn't make it because they didn't know or because they couldn't.
No. My wife didn't know.
And part of the reason my boo is that I didn't see it in the, in the board notes and I, I don't know how I missed it, but I did. It was there, I just didn't see it.
Well, we'll remind the art.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't have it, you know, we have to look at the time of year too.
Yeah.
Maybe have it a little earlier. Because this is such a.
Time, time.
I think I'm full together. Okay. So I sound again like a Cuban. Um, so we have, we passed the minutes and. A minute and now we're on to tuition rates. As long as I am not.
Take Ken, right.
You have to get rid of that.
Thank you.
If you can hear us.
You can hear us? Everyone that's out there, you can hear us?
Not, not Andrea that well.
Right, not Andrea, but we can hear you, Susan.
All right, I'm using my teacher voice.
Uh-oh.
We tell Andrea to use her principal voice.
Right.
I, I heard about that today from my, my former student. He said that I was tough. And that I was taller, I know that.
Yeah. All right, Ken.
So on attachment number two, we have proposed tuition rates for out of district, non, non rotten resident students. The, the first column, twenty-two, twenty-three, those are our approved rates for this year. Those rates for twenty-three, twenty-four. For general education, that represents eighty-five percent of average cost per student for the, for the elementary, middle and high school. You'll see that they, they mostly stayed around the same. Actually, it looks like the high school went down a little bit.
Yeah.
But it's based upon the average cost per student for the EFS report for the twenty-two school. Down below that are additional costs. Special education program costs are based upon, we, we look at the actual costs that go into these programs and determine a first student cost for each of those. You'll notice there's an additional one this year called the resource room. This is, uh, we didn't have this before, but there was, uh, it was a incident where there was a student that came in, uh, came into the district that utilized just the resource room, so we need to have a rate for that, so that, that here. IB costs, those are just actual costs divided by the number of students that actually went down year over year. And then the additional services just based upon the, the learn related services rate schedule, same as the prior year.
So we reviewed this in finance and facility, so they saw it first and we thought it would be good to bring it to the COW because later this month, or actually just in a week, we're going to be voting on these rates so that we can have it. We do have, I think, two students, did you mention that, that are in the IB program from Stonington and, and Westerly? So there are people who will reach out to us. We haven't advertised, that could be something we could do is to advertise and that could be those extra funds that would come directly to the town, not to the school district. So.
Any questions?
Yes. Um, Ken, is, if somebody is involved with the IB program, do they pay the fifteen to fifty-five plus?
Plus.
The twenty-seven, twenty-five?
Mm-hmm.
So in actuality, it's over seventeen thousand dollars, almost eighteen.
That's right. If, if a student was involved in, in the, in the IB, IB program.
Okay.
We have looked at comparing costs with other districts, I think Old Line has done this. I'm not sure how many other districts, but ours was pretty reasonable, I think, and affordable. And also, um, St. Berners, we have looked at at one point, so.
Yeah, they're all.
They sure are. Not like it used to be.
No. Oh, sorry.
We probably had them before, but. In the four categories in the general electricity rates, how many people?
There, there's, there's two students in high school that are paying. Is that the question?
Yeah, and what about middle, elementary?
You don't have any?
We have had in the past, students typically, when they moved to another district that might not have a special ed program like ours, that's happened in the past.
Or in the case of sometimes with a foster parent situation. Been in the district, but they're really.
A nexus.
Other, other district, they would have to pay the rates that happens.
So the other school district.
Really? So if, if they're out of nexus, that means they have to pay out of district?
So.
Not them, the school district that is there.
That's the sending school district, that's the nexus.
Like Norwich.
Yes.
One team here, they're actually in a, Norwich, Norwich.
Okay.
And vice versa.
Okay.
And out of state.
Not that.
Yeah.
Well, mostly, mostly, yeah.
There is.
They pay the things for that.
Yep.
I think it's a good idea when you say it, we need to sell it.
It could be advertised.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's not many IB schools.
I see Jay's.
Oh, okay, Jay.
Uh, yes, good evening. Uh, first of all, I want to say congratulations to Ken. Connecticut colleges gain is our loss. And you've really. Done a great job, I think, of, of working on this budget over the years to make it more transparent. And to make it understandable. For board members as well as the public, and so I want to thank you and, you know, I wish we could have a vote and I would vote no.
I know, yeah, I tried that.
On accepting your resignation, but I guess we don't have that authority. But anyway, uh, we wish you all the best. And whoever comes in to take your place, they, they've got a budget already in place and they've got some time, it's a breathing room. So, thank you for that. And we did discuss this particular item at Finance Facilities, I just want to make it clear in case anyone's wondering. So a few years ago, we worked with Ken to say, you know. We, we've talked over the years about marketing. But we said, you know, it, the, um, the tuition rates, you know, could look a little bit steep and he came up with an eighty-five percent. Figure where rather than charging one hundred percent, because we all know that, that the idea of per pupil is. Is not exact, adding it one more student to a class doesn't mean you have to hire another teacher and, and this sort of thing. So we know that the, the expenses are, uh, don't go up by that full amount. And so he had come up with this eighty-five percent. And so that's why we take the per pupil costs and then apply that discount, if you will. But, you know, there are other districts, I, I believe in, in Rhode Island that, that really do market their IB. And while I do realize that the money goes to the town, you know, it still is something you can bring up during budget that, you know, i- in a way, it's a. It, it's, it's. Reducing the cost a little bit for the town.
It's another source of revenue, shall we say?
Right, exactly. Thank you.
When we do our budget for next year and we're showing what the true cost is to taxpayers, we might want to have a line on that budget showing with an asterisk or something. So in addition to what we're seeing here, we had cost recovery last year of. Nineteen, eighteen thousand dollars, whatever between directly. Just another argument for. These good students.
Right, right, certainly something we should bring out and show, and I think it's something we can talk to communications and our, you know, communication team here at Central Office about how do we get this word out? I know that Old Line has these big spreads of come to Old Line, you know, it's a great place to learn and I think that, you know, we could do something similar.
Um, Andrea, I, um, there, Groton has put up signs around town, um, something about welcome to Groton, see and explore. When you drive into Montville, Connecticut, it says, welcome to Montville, we're proud of our schools. I was wishing the town had consulted us and put something like that at the different entrances, but maybe, maybe sometime in the future.
Thank you. Dean.
Uh, Rita, I've heard from somebody, a long time, former educator, the reason why Montville signs. The reason why Montville signs say that.
I, I, I know about that, yes.
I just do, to try to make up for something in the past.
Right.
Any other discussion?
Yes, thank you, Ken.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sort of.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Ken, I'm sorry if I'm out of the loop, I guess I've been out of loop a lot lately.
Me too.
So, when are you, when's your last day?
Yeah, it was just announced, I just got his letter officially.
Yeah. July, thank you, sir. Well, I agree.
Sort of.
No, Concol, yes, I, I'm totally there because I'm like, oh God, but good luck, Con College and so, I'm a graduate, so I'm happy you're over there.
We will miss him.
Yes, you.
I will especially.
Yeah.
But now we can post it, we'll post it tomorrow.
Okay.
So we're gonna move on to.
Need a vote on this?
No, no, oh, no, the vote is gonna be next week.
I'm sorry, of course.
That's right.
We're gonna move on.
Yes.
Two grants.
So, um, attachment three is a summary of the competitive grants that we received and applied for. Over this past year. So, uh, we spoke earlier in the year about the, um, the most recent DODIA grant, um, that five-year grant project now, it, uh, will have a focus on world language, so all of our world language teachers are receiving professional development and will be expanding the world language program into the elementary.
Starting next year.
Great. So this year, we were fortunate to receive two technology grants and these are from new funding sources, um, different departments within the state. So we just received word of those a couple of weeks ago. One will be to update our live streaming capabilities. Uh, so basically, they're both equipment grants, um, though the second one has, uh, funding for professional development and helping screen habits and will have funds to, um, bring Scott Triscoll back to the district to give some presentation to the high school students and possibly middle school students.
Now, where is that grant that you're showing on here, is it on this list?
So that's, uh, the online abuse through the Department of. Security and Protection. And then we have a couple of grants, uh, that we're still waiting to hear, uh, we submitted our, another DODIA grant this year, um, that one, if awarded, will hear in late September, that would, uh, supply our elementary, uh, night at schools with funding for continued programming and more supplies and also to support, um, our culturally responsive curriculum that we started, that worked already, so we'll continue that. Uh, we're working on two, two grants, uh, to extend, um, the mental health positions that were hired through, uh, some of the ARPA funding. Uh, we're actually submitting one of those tomorrow, we're still waiting to hear on another that was submitted about a month ago. And then the other big, um, grant area for this year was we submitted several grants to, um, different security programs, uh, two with the state and one federal, uh, Department of Justice. So we're waiting to hear on all of those and. Those are, were kind of submitted in concert with the CIP to the town, um, those two will provide matching grants for, matching funding sources for one another. So if awarded, that, uh, we will purchase new security equipment and we will install a, Clint could describe this better, but a multimedia, um, security system which basically would allow the, um, the school districts to have, um, live communication with the. The police and fire in the event of an emergency.
And it'll connect and solve.
Good, yeah. And the work, um, the grant funded work on career pathways is continuing, uh, the farm to school grants that we received a couple of years ago are set to wrap up the end of this month in September, but Ernie reached out to me today and, um, we're looking at some additional grants that'll be due later in July, that would extend some of that work too. So, are there any questions?
Maybe the Congressman Courtney Grant with the career pathway, that was an interesting one that.
Yeah.
And we have the funds through this year.
Yeah, we have one more year on that, so, um, the Court, what we call the Courtney Grant, um, that has funded, uh, work that we're doing with EB through their vote next gen program, so we have, uh, Fitch High School students now that are participating in a program off, it's at the, um, at Grasso and at the Westerly Education Center where they're learning manufacturing and, um, are on a pathway to job opportunities that EB.
I think we had two students at least sign with EB, so as soon as they walk across and get their diploma, they have a job already, right, waiting for them at elected vote.
Yeah, we had a lot of students at the high school that were interested in that, I believe at least six participated in the program, um, it sounds like two maybe have accepted jobs and we had approximately fifty juniors that were interested in it for next year, so there's definitely a lot of interest there.
And I'd just like to commend Shannon, she's always looking for grant opportunities, the people come to her with an idea, she just seeks it out and I'm really impressed with the process that she uses to involve our school community, it's not like we just look for grants and say, here's a grant, we're so happy, she really involves the community, so you might want to speak to that, like especially when I think of the career pathway, all the work that's gone into bringing people together on that.
Yeah. Um, so I mean, teachers and, uh, staff administrators do reach out to me. Frequently throughout the year and will, you know, ask me, do I know of any grant funding sources for this or for that, and so I actually just kind of keep the list going. Um, and then I always kind of keeping an eye out for new opportunities, I mean, there's some that come up each year that I'm pretty familiar with at this point, the DODIA grant, the after-school grants, Perkins and, um, but then I also just sort of scan the, um, the federal sites and the state sites and even some private funder sites too, um, pretty regularly to just see if there's new opportunities and, um, or there's ones that we just haven't tried yet. So, that's kind of how it.
Yeah, I mean, you really do a great job, like setting up meetings, having us all come to the table, really brainstorming, like even this next DODIA that we put together, she really interviewed and met with staff at every single school in our district because it's a K through twelve, gathered their ideas and their input and, and really it cultivated from, generated from our staff in the schools on partnerships, community partners, we've got such a plethora of partners and we, you know, it's a lot of money, but to continue it now for the next five years. Should we get the grant?
Yeah.
Would be an awesome thing.
Oh, the magnets.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, so just so you, you're aware of how the process works a little bit, when I learn of a new grant opportunity, I typically meet with Bill and Susan and, you know, share with them the opportunity, make sure they know about it and then we discuss who, which teacher leaders, which curriculum coordinators, which administrators should be invited to the table and, um, you know, once we bring that group together and then we set a schedule to meet regularly, usually over several months until the proposal submitted and, um, then once we receive the grant, then we move into, um, project implementation mode and we kind of repeat the process, we bring all those people back together and then figure out our, um, timeline depending on the length of the grant, length of the project, um, and then it just kind of goes from there.
You see that Beverly has a question?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. Can you explain, um, the World Language Advancement and Betterment Program, it started in July twenty-twenty-two?
Uh, oh.
The World Language, um, just started last year.
Okay, and it's gonna go all the way to June twenty-twenty-seven?
That's correct.
Okay, and it says professional development for all world language teachers. So what kind of professional development are they going to get? And how much would it be each year? I mean, do you break it down by year by year by year? Or how do you do that?
That's right, so it's a, it's a million dollar grant, so that breaks out to approximately two hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand per year, thank you. And, um, uh, I can't remember off the top of my head, but a good portion of that is going to a professional educational consultant who's been trained in, um, the world language standards, which are set by a national organization, um, and so she brings our, our teachers together, they go over what the new national like expectations are, which are also aligned with the Connecticut state standards and they work on curriculum development and alignment, uh, both across the grade levels and also vertically, um, in grade six through twelve, and then they're also working on the plan on how to roll out, uh, world language into the elementary school.
There were two teachers, a French teacher and a Spanish teacher in that grant, starting this next year, so we posted to hire for those teachers to come on board, so we can get the carousel model, I don't know if you know about this, but typically in sixth grade, in the beginning of middle school, kids have the opportunity for one half year to have kind of a Spanish, um, carousel and then the other half French and then they have to decide the following year. So the idea was to get the carousel level and to understand parts and bits of the, the language and the culture in the elementary, so when they start in the middle school, they can start with the first level as a novice. So they get to decide, and I think there's also supplies in there, there's some textbooks and some materials, some software, so there's other things beside the PB. Um, the other PB that's in there is some international baccalaureate because we all are in middle years program, so not only do we have the actual national standards, the state standards, the cult standards, which are Connecticut standards, but we also have the international baccalaureate standards, so they're weaving all of this together and the teachers are actually planning together so that we have the curriculum built at the same time, which is pretty cool and to be able to afford that with this grant is really particularly cool.
Susan, are we paying, um, as she said, a good portion of the money's going towards a consultant, are we paying the consultant every year? Or is it one time?
Every year, it's not, it's not a big part of the grant, it's a portion of the grant. Um, I would say that the two staff members and all of this other, um, you know, professional learning is also part of the grant and some supplies.
Okay, all right, I have another question, but, um, Matthew, it's, it's about another grant, so Matthew, if he has a question on this grant, he can a- ask that question.
Thank you, Beverly, I appreciate it. So my question is, sign language, sign language program. Classes that I've attended are marvelous, the way they interact and that they work, and work and groups phenomenal, but I haven't heard sign language involved in this grant.
It is, yes, I should have mentioned that.
How that's evolved?
Yeah, so there is funding available for the ASL teachers to attend ASL conferences.
To develop curriculum.
To develop curriculum.
Also develop, sorry, uh, this year, um, the ASL three class and what we're looking to do this summer is to expand ASL four. Again, we're, with, by strengthening it at the elementary level, it's going to affect every level moving up. And what we hope to do, we want to keep encouraging kids to take, uh, world languages throughout high school, not just in their freshman and sophomore.
And encourage that seal by literacy, so there's also funding for the Apple test in that, so that all kids will be able to have that assessment throughout the years. I think there's gonna be eventually a fifth grade assessment and eighth grade assessment and a tenth and eleventh grade, so that we can monitor their progress through the year so that more kids will earn the seal, which is worth nine credits at Southern and, and credits at other universities, so it's really, and it really looks, um, it's a really great thing to have in your portfolio as you go to college or career.
So Beverly, do you have a second question?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Ackerman. My second question has to do with the ARP ESA after-school grant and it says a new after-school director at Fitch High School, is that, um, how much of that grant are we paying the director? And is that something that we are going to continue after the offer, after the ESA funding runs out? Are we gonna continue to have this after-school director?
So, um, so we were eligible to apply to this grant because we are now a Twenty-First Century Learning Center after-school program, we have that at, um, Groton Middle School, so this grant through ARPA Fund, um, really allowed us to kind of test out expanding the after-school program at the high school and to organize our data there too. So the person that we hired is, is a stipended after-school, or not after-school, but, um, physician for one of the guidance counselors and he's done an amazing job, um, getting more teachers involved, getting more students involved, especially students that are not involved in any other after-school activities, um, they've created new club, new programs, um, and he's been tracking their participation throughout all of that, um, and their interests and other types of activities, um, and we're gonna take a look at that data this summer and that'll help inform the program for next year. Uh, the, the, this funding will end, uh, next year, though we can apply for, in, uh, an extension, it would be a, a competitive grant again, or we can consider applying for Fitch to be another Twenty-First Century Learning Center site, which is a, it's a big federal grant program, um, that lots of districts like Groton receive funds for around the state and it supports their after-school work, so I think that should be, we should probably talk about that more in the coming year. But yes, this funding will, for this particular grant, will end in May twenty-twenty-four.
And we can keep, Beverly, we can keep the board abreast of how the data is showing and what we're thinking about, what should next steps be, so the board can, you know, think about that too. But it's been a great pilot opportunity and what I love best is it's really meant for kids to get them engaged in some of those after-school activities that they ordinarily wouldn't be and, um, what, first out of the gate, what we see are more engaged kids and maybe even then asking to be part of other clubs and opportunities after school that we already have.
And how much are we paying the director?
Paying them, sorry.
The after-school director, how much?
We don't have that grant in front of us, but we can look for.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a typical after-school stipended position.
Okay.
Or.
Yeah, those stipends are in line with what we already have currently.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And my last question has to do, um, for the fund for teachers, how did you choose the two teachers, Michelle Manning and, um, John, I can't pronounce his last name. To, how did you choose and to get this, uh, to be awarded? How did you choose and to get this, uh, to be awarded this money?
So we did not choose them. Um, they applied for a grant through the Program Fund for Teachers, which is supported in Connecticut by the Dalio Foundation. So they wrote personal grants and, uh, I assisted Michelle Manning with hers. Um, so each year in September, I put an invitation out to the teachers to apply for this funding opportunity and invite them over to central office. We talk about what the funding opportunity is. And I offered to help them with their application if they, if they would like my help. So Michelle, I worked with Michelle on hers, um, but John Cositech did it all on his own. Um, and these two were selected by the Fund for Teachers this year. They each received a five thousand dollar fellowship award.
And we had a couple more just recently win an award. So I think every year we get a couple. It seems like two to three.
Yeah. Yeah. We're actually trying to get more teachers to apply for it. There's some districts where Fund for Teachers awards up to eleven fellowships.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Beverly.
No, I'm just want to say thank you and thank you for all the work you do in getting us grants. Appreciate it.
My pleasure. I love working on.
I, I had a question, but it told me Blue Sky is not a present tense. I don't know if you're staying late, staying to be, or if you have a special question.
Go ahead and ask it that.
Who's guy?
I wanted to know if anybody else has a question before we go on.
No, but can Matthew speak closer to the, um, microphone? Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate it.
Very few people accuse me of being soft. Thank you. Is that better, Bev? Is that better, Bev?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
So my question is, is it worthwhile to think about the addition, long term, three, four, five years out of an additional language? Uh, I remember twenty, thirty years ago, the Department of Defense, uh, supported teaching of Russian. They felt that we needed to have people trained in order to provide some national security support. So I'll use Chinese as a marker, but you can pick whatever language that we want. Would it be worth making a referral to the, uh, curriculum committee to consider what benchmarks we would need, uh, what benchmarks might hypothetically be needed to, uh, justify approaching this as something to do? Again, this is nothing to do now. I'm just trying to take a, a long term view.
About Russian or Chinese? I just wanted to mention, so when, um, so this was actually our second time applying for the World Language Grant. Um, and the first time, uh, we, I worked really closely with Kelly Donovan on putting together the first proposal. And, um, we did, we actually did explore adding Chinese. Um, and one of the concerns there at that time was finding a teacher that, that was trained in Chinese. So just something to keep in mind that, that, that was a concern that was brought up that we might, yeah, I think we, yeah.
Yeah, I actually forgot to, I forgot to mention, I wrote live or remote instruction, which was taking account of what you just raised with the, uh, wonderful boards that we have. If we had somebody who's regularly scheduled and kept his or her schedule faithfully, whether that technology could be used to bring something that we don't have locally. But again, this is not for this year or next year.
Well, that, that would be a considerable cost to add another one, but it's certainly something I talked to with the superintendent from the learn area to, you know, to discuss what would be the language, you know, and what languages could we then offer that maybe another school is offering, um, because of some of the legislation that doesn't allow us to do what we did during COVID and Zoom in lifetime, um, like we're doing now, you know, and teach the kids in front of us. Um, they really restricted us from being able to do some of those creative things. But I will, again, talk to, um, the superintendents about if there's any possible way of opening that up for students and what would the cost be to the district for that?
Any other? Andrea, Andrea, I have a comment. Um, we have had students do Mandarin virtually. This, I believe it's the state of Connecticut has a program that we've used and, um, students have taken Mandarin, not Russian as far as I, uh, know. But, uh, we, in the past, we've looked into, uh, Eastline has a Mandarin teacher and whether or not we could ever share her, you know, with, with our students virtually. So I, I, I think Susan, going to learn would be the best thing. And, um, and we could check with the high school if anybody is now taking Mandarin, because we have had students in the past do that. And at one time, we even had students go to Ledyard High School and take German. Because Ledyard, um, they used to take German at that time. They, they taught German. And so we had it and then it went away and they went to Ledyard. But now I don't think Ledyard does German either anymore. So, but I hope we just bring back Latin. Thank you.
I, I have one question if nobody else does. And that is, um, my, my, yours one of when I heard, and he did it all on his own. And maybe this is, um, a question for Susan more than a distribution. But that is, what are the parameters? Let's say that I wanted to, to apply for a grant and I did it all on my own. What approvals do I have to have?
Well, I think the Dalio is something that funds teachers specifically. So they are certainly at liberty to go and ask for the, that funding. Um, I think the way we do it though, as the district is we ask them to come and I think they have to get a sign off from the principal because it does include some time, like, um, I believe that, um, Mr. Cositech is going to Antarctica to do some scientific research in December. And I think it's hitting over the holidays, but he might have to take a day or two off. So we really have to sign off on it for them, but they certainly are able to go out. As far as getting a grant for the district, that would have to actually come through this central office and go through us. So am I.
So I'm hearing that I, as a teacher, if I wanted to offer a club, say, in something that was just outrageously anti-educational, I could do it on my own without any approval from you?
No, that's not what I said. I said that adapt through the Dalio fund where it's really fun for teachers to go out and get their own professional learning. That's what it's about. It's not about starting at class.
Oh, I see.
It's very unique. And, um, now we do have the Groton Scholarship Foundation, the Groton Education Foundation that offers funds for teachers to get their own grants. And that could be for an activity they want to do in the classroom, an experiment, a project. So that also goes through a vetting service, but vetting process. But the principal has to ultimately sign off.
Yeah. So the fund for teachers, right, the teachers can apply for it on their own, but their application usually stands a better chance if they indicate that they've worked with the district or that they've talked with their building principal or, or someone.
I'm not worried about them getting a grant. I'm worried about the principal or the superintendent knowing what's being offered as an extra for the school.
Right. Well, I mean, I guess I'm saying with Fund for Teachers, they could be awarded a fellowship, go somewhere and, and through Fund for Teachers and then come back and say that they want to do this. And then they would have to go through the vetting process. So, yeah, yeah. Just because Fund for Teachers award, it doesn't guarantee that they are able to bring that into the class. But it looks good on their application if they say that they've already talked to.
Well, our two music teachers at Groton Middle School went to Trinidad to learn from Trinidad University to learn about world drumming. And through the MSAP grant, we had drums from around the world, steel drums. And we have, yeah, all kinds of drums. So then they actually did the curriculum, worked in the curriculum. And then the middle schoolers, you, you know, you could go into those classrooms and you could see them learning to do the world drumming from their teachers. And also they would find experts who would also come in to showcase the world drumming. So that was a, for instance, of a field trip that they were actually able to bring back into the classroom and teach their students drums.
A lot of the teachers that I worked with on Fund for Teachers, their, their interest in their fellowship is sparked by something they've already seen in their school or like with their students, like, um, Michelle Manning, uh, had been working on an African curriculum with her students already, or, you know, approved. And then that inspired her to want to go out and learn more so that she can make that subject area more interesting for.
Is Michelle Manning a librarian or classroom teacher?
Library media specialist.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is she going in the summer or does she need time off also?
All the Fund for Teachers fellowships are supposed to take, take place during the summer. Um, there was an exception, I think, made just because of the pandemic that a lot of those teachers weren't able to go that year. So Fund for Teachers allowed them to go at a different time if the district was okay with it. But they're always supposed to take place in the summer.
Any other questions or comments? This is, this is, I don't think I've seen this in all these nine years I've been with you. But if you look at the COW, the referral tracker is empty because we've gone through everything. So if you have a good idea for COW beyond what we do for our monthly data sharing and all of that, um, you know, this, this could be a good time to discuss what you think would be a helpful COW topic.
Could we have an update on the one card, the public library, Groton Public Schools collaboration?
Absolutely. You've got one thing on the list. Anyone else out there who, um, has an idea for COW?
Well, then, I don't see anything. Oh, Matthew.
I'm just trying to give everybody else a chance. I guess I have two more. I was thinking about it earlier. Uh, I sent a, uh, last, two weeks ago or three weeks ago, I'm not sure, the Office of Technology assessed, uh, distributed a document, I may be butchering the title, but it was essentially artificial intelligence, the impact on, uh, public education, teaching and learning. I love they said teaching and learning is the model that they use. And, uh, I sent that to board members, to Susan and to Bill. Uh, and I'm wondering if that, I don't think this is critical, but at some point that could be something we could discuss. Everybody's focused on ChatGPT, whatever that is. But I think that, uh, artificial intelligence is going to affect our lives, the way computers affected our lives, the way open deals affected our lives. There's good about it, there's bad about it, but I'd rather be the act, be active than reactive. Proactive rather than reactive.
Okay.
Ready for another one?
Of what?
Okay, uh, on, under communications, Kim had made a referral previously. It didn't make it on the list. She sent me a note asking if we would, uh, take a look at doing some kind of document to, you recall, we had talked at some point about, uh, when we were working on the budget, uh, about, what do we do to attract people to live in our, in our district? And, you know, how do we wave our flag so that if somebody's moving into the area, they get some information about what our school has to offer? And Kim, uh, asked if the communication committee could do something. Uh, she mentioned real estate people, but I think it's broader than that. Our economic development department of the town has nothing about the schools. Need the, uh, Mystic and Southeast Regional Chamber of Commerce have nothing about the schools. So I would see a document, uh, potentially have the possibility to use for all those and also to go to HR resources. I know when my son started the U B, he got a big pack of community resources. I don't think our school has.
Like Welcome Wagon.
Like Welcome Wagon. So that's something that, uh, communication is going to work on sometime over the summer. I'd like to add that to the.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, then, could you add, um, Susan, can you add cursive writing onto the COW just for discussion?
Sure. Do you want that in curriculum or do you want it in COW?
I'll take it in COW.
I didn't know.
Cursive writing.
Oh, cursive.
In the first end.
And the only thing I want to say about, um, the one on, uh, review of the English language curriculum is that it's on there with grammar and conventions. And I, I want to make sure that everybody understands, um, when I talk about grammar, I'm not talking about instructional grammar. Like if you don't have a, um, a comma to hear, you've got two sentences together and that's a comma splice. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about rhetorical grammar, which means that use, it means using grammar to make writing powerful. And right now I'm going through documents, scholarly articles at home on the, the teaching of writing. And, um, I, I'm coming across some very interesting approaches to write. And that's what we're going to be looking at. Right. And I think, is there anyone else who has a question?
Um, I just wanted to add, um, cursive writing, if we were teaching cursive writing.
We've added it to a COW. That's what, um, Beverly just.
Oh. Oh, she did that too. Okay. Thank you.
You were both alike minds.
I had a phone call.
Oh, that's all right. We got that one in.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, before we give a motion with Jared, if you'll notice under communications, it says discussion of the communication plan. I believe everybody should have received theirs in their packet. Did we all, did that go out?
I don't think that's gone out.
No, it hasn't gone out yet.
Okay.
You have a decision.
All right.
So then if he could, uh, make arrangements, I'll speak to Phil to get it out to all the board members. And I guess I would ask that, uh, the discussion will not take place at this coming meeting, town meeting, because Phil's going to be absent. We'll have a discussion at the following, the following meeting. But if you guys have.
Following town meetings we'll have in July.
We'll only have one July meeting, so we'll have to put it on that one.
Okay. Sorry.
Su- Susan, are we having a meeting next Monday?
Um, the nineteenth, no. No, we are not. No.
Okay, good.
So we have, yeah.
All right. Can I take a moment? Can I just take a moment to? Go ahead. Thanks, Susan.
Anyone else?
Just if, when you, if, when you take a look at this, uh, I guess, uh, for the camera or whatever, uh, if you have any questions, comments, opinions, if you could send those to Phil and me in advance, that would just facilitate our focus to try to respond to your interests.
So, yeah, I have a question quickly, Andrea.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Beverly.
I, I don't see anybody's hand though, so I, I'm not seeing it. Rita, that's you.
My hand, my, I just wanted to know. So our next meeting is the last Monday, which is June twenty fourth. Is that correct?
That's correct. Twenty sixth.
And there's no calm meeting on the nineteenth?
Right.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Beverly.
Thank you, Dr. Ackerman. Um, I just wanted to, um, congratulate our superintendent, Susan Austin, for winning the Betsy Carter Award from the Council, from the Connecticut Council Leaders of Mathematics. Well done.
Thank you, Beverly.
Superintendent Austin.
Yay.
I'm quite honored because Betsy Carter was one of the superstars at the state. She ran mathematics when I was a teacher and she's a coach. And everybody who's on that list is a superhero in my mind. I just was so profoundly honored to be named. They said, because superintendents don't come out for this kind of gig. And I'm still coming out to do the good work. So.
Well, congratulations again, Susan.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? The only thing, uh, the only other thing I have is that, oh, Dr. Horryan brought the, um, the Wara. And it is just fabulous.
Yes.
On his son's, um, cartoon in here. And everybody's, uh, work is so, so, just so wonderful. And I'm, and I, as I opened up this page, it happens to be, um, and I didn't mean to do this. It just happened. It's Kyra. It's Kyra Robinson's story in future and she's a Martin Luther King scholar. So this is a fabulous, fabulous thing. And the artwork, I may, I might say, uh, even though I haven't seen it yet in total, the artwork here is fabulous. And I think Dr. Orbin's daughter's focus. Okay, now, I'm not, I can't.
I have one question. I just wanted to make one comment. I had my hand raised. Maybe you didn't see it. I'll put it down.
I see Beverly.
Okay. All right. Um, I just wanted to tell Liz that I already received a thank you note from the student that received our scholarship. And I was so pleased. So please let the scholarship committee know. So thank you.
I will. I will.
Yeah.
I can't do it this time.
Oh, Beverly.
Oh, Beverly, use your hand up for a reason.
Yeah. When I opened up the Emporia, I, I opened up the page to my neighbor, Elias Slocum. And he lives right across the street from me. So, and it is a beautiful, it is great. I mean, they're doing fantastic work up there, up at the high school.
Yeah. Oh, all right. And so.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, you do, Rita. I have a question, clarifying question.
Oh, yes.
That, um, made a statement. He, he didn't know whether it was possible to make a referral to curriculum.
Well, they told me it was already going to be discussed at a COW, so we didn't need to make it about cursive writing.
No, that's not what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay.
Um, what then benchmarks would the board need to add in order to add a language? In particular, he mentioned Russian. So my question is, is that going on the referral list to curriculum?
That's up to Matthew.
My, my, my question, actually it was more, we did mention Russian. It was more focused on Chinese. But I think the question was, should it be, uh, a referral? And I didn't get a definitive answer, so I'm just going to wait patiently for a while.
So we talked also about, um, having multiple languages taught kind of in, in a way, um, where we could share resources with other districts. So I said I would take that on as, you know, something I could work with my partners that learn.
I'm very comfortable with that.
So I'll, I'll make sure it's on my list.
That's fine.
So we have, we have a motion for Rita and a second from William, from William. So leading is adjourned at, I think.
So you're going to say all in favor?
Oh, all in favor or not?
I.
Stay over.
All right.
Let's get, let's get to the cars before the rain.
Yeah.
It's raining. It's raining.
I know. I hear it.
It's not boring.